Now call to order the March 26th School Committee Meeting. Before we delve into this, I'd like to thank each and every one of you for doing the best that you can to try and wire in remotely. Part of us doing this meeting is almost like a dry run with the new technology and all things that go with it. We all know that the translation between, shall we say, being in the room and being remotely keyed in is difficult. I know it's not hard to ask each and every one of you to do the best that we can. With saying that, I believe we should delve into our agenda. I believe our first thing is, under routine matters, is to approve the minutes. No pen session in March 9, 2020. I'll entertain a motion to...
So moved.
Yes.
I think we had a...
You have a motion?
Yep. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we do have to go to the roll call. Ms. Lamarr?
She's not present.
Okay, she's not present. Ms. Saros?
Yeah, yep.
George Kacoris?
Aye.
Mayek Kacoris? There was another someone. Okay, we're having technical difficulties.
It's alright.
Ms. Dolan?
Earl.
Mr. Chafe?
The chair votes aye.
I believe we have, shall we say, we have the five, so it gives us enough to pull with that. Motion passing. Let's see, communications and accommodations.
We're gonna do... Did you argue minutes? Was that minutes? I'm sorry.
Yes, we approved the minutes with the five. Five people ratifies it. We have technical difficulties with the mayor and Ms. Lamarr.
Okay. Alright, so moving on, just to let you know a few things. One, we have, it's been obviously a different and busy last couple of weeks since we shut school down and as we know that currently the governor, or recently the governor also shut us down for a little bit longer, which we'll talk about in a few minutes. So, just under accommodations and communications, I wanted to let you know that Dr. Bessie Clifford, who was our Science Department Chair, as well as Chris Bakner, our Facilities Manager, and Ed Cronin, worked hard over the last couple of days to donate 100 pair of goggles to, actually, to Mary Beth McGrath's town of Braintree Health Department. And those are being, or they've not already been distributed, to the Police Department and the Fire Department, along with multiple boxes of gloves. So, just wanted to recognize the work that they did and as well, just, you know, let you all know that it's been nice that the School Department's been able to help out with a larger effort of trying to help the town. So, we also wanted to let you know that school nurses, now this, see if I can just bring this up real quickly, have been hard at work helping out the town. They have been involved in a lot of planning with the Health Department. Now, the town tweeted, put on Facebook, also tweeted, this is a really nice picture of our school nurses working in collaboration with the Town Health Department. They have been just extraordinary and really wanted to thank them, and I know, I certainly can speak on behalf of the mayor, that, you know, we're grateful that we have so many people coming together from the Town Department and not the Fire Department, coming together from Town Departments and from the School Department to really try to work through this challenging and difficult issue that we're facing with Facebook right now. I'm next for Town Hall today. Had a little time with the mayor and also got a chance to go down and see the nurses at work planning out the next couple of days. So, many thanks to them. Also wanted to, you know, let you know that, and I know that you know as a School Committee, but the amount of work that we've been doing with directors and leaders within the School Department to get our resources page up and running for parents and students, just to show you, if you have not seen it, I think many of you probably have, many thanks to Rebecca Kidwell in Technology, as well as Andrew Maron, who have just been instrumental in designing the site, but more importantly, and as importantly, to our directors, to Assistant Superintendent Jeff Lee, under his direction. We have met multiple, multiple hours through different channels where there's, actually, we've been using Google Chat for our internal meetings, but to get these resources up and running, I just think that we've done, you know, our people just, again, not surprisingly, a tremendous job in a short period of time, really putting out high-quality resources for parents and students to use. You can tell you that overall, the feedback has been very positive and, you know, we're grateful that we've been able to make that transition. Another group, we just have to make sure that we recognize, because they've been tremendous, is our food service staff. As all of you know, we've been running our Grab and Go program now since the first day. We took, as we did, we did cancel school on Friday, the 13th, but on Monday, as soon as we came back, as soon as we started Monday, we were already in process of providing the Grab and Go lunches at both Ross and Hollis. We've been running from 10 to noon, and we started out around, I believe around 200 or so lunches have been served in total, and we, that number continues to ramp up. I've been able to go over and see it, as well as a few other people, Assistant Superintendent Lee, people have just been really grateful, and, you know, the food service people have just thrown a great job with that. So, many thanks to them, and of course, to our custodians and maintenance crew, who had the very hard job of, once we emptied these buildings out, really going through and just disinfecting with some additional supplies that we had purchased that were, had been approved for COVID-19 treatment, and we continue to keep our buildings closed. We will be doing reopening in, to a small degree, as we move forward over the next few weeks, because we have to let some teachers go in and get some resources. Now, the closure has been extended to May 4. So, those are really just the accommodations and communications that I wanted to share with you.
Gift approvals. Oh, wow. Thank you. Okay, like always, we'll do a roll call at the end. I will ask for a motion to accept in a second. Number one, we have Braintree High School School Credit for Life Fair, gifts to schools totaling $4,000. Fourth, checks in the amount of $250 from Quincy College, $1,500 Quincy Credit Union, $2,000 from South Shore Bank, and $250 for Keller Williams M. Merrill to be used for the Credit for Life Fair. I'll entertain a motion to accept in a second.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, I have a motion and I have a second. Number two, East Middle School, gift to schools totaling $12,731.20, one deposit in the amount of $12,731.20 to be used for the Quebec trip. I'll... Please.
For next year?
So, okay. Lost in transition, we will, right now, the Quebec trip is off, so I would suggest that we table that. We're gonna need to be figuring out how to manage where we go from here with the deposits that we have. So, if we could...
I'll make a motion to table.
Alright, I have a motion to table. I need a second. Alright, we'll go, a roll call on that. Does anyone have a problem with that being tabled? Hearing none. Okay, fine. You will be voting to approve that tabling. Now, we're gonna move to Baystate Textiles, gifts to schools totaling $128.50. Four checks, the amount of, first check is $17, second check, $33.25, third check, $53.75, fourth and fifth, $24.50 from Baystate Textiles. I'll entertain a motion to accept in a second.
Motion.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll go with a roll call vote on these three items. Ms. Dolan?
Aye.
Ms. Lamarr?
Aye.
Mr. Chafe?
Aye.
Mr. Kacoris?
Aye.
Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor? And the chair votes aye. I have six, and we will get them there. So, those, those two motions, one and three, pass, and the East Middle School is successfully tabled for another time. And as always, thank you very much for all the gifts that we receive. They help us greatly, and again, thank you very much. Moving on, our number three, from the superintendent.
So, just thank you, Mr. Chair, just a few updates from us. So, it has been a, overuse the term that's been getting used a lot, but it's been a fluid situation for us. We continue to make adjustments as we get more information. There has been multiple conference calls with superintendents across the state, with the commissioner, and as all of you know, the most recent decision by the governor to shut down schools until Monday, May 4, which was announced yesterday. We have received some guidance from the commissioner in a written form today as superintendents. It candidly leaves a lot of questions still, I think, for us. We've had initial discussions. We held two administrative meetings today with our total team, one prior to the guidance coming out and one afterward. There really are still a lot of unanswered questions about what the guidance is providing, and, you know, there's just probably the concerns about how we shift into this next phase, being out until May 4, meaning that we need to give some consideration to pivoting from just providing parents and students resources to actually providing some form of structured learning opportunities with more involvement and contact with our teachers who have up to this point been participating in disassociated PD opportunities. I also wanted to ask Assistant Superintendent Lee to comment on some of the discussions that we've been having and some of the upcoming decisions that we need to make, but prior to him speaking, I also want to let you know that the commissioner is holding a conference call tomorrow. We're hoping that from that conference call, we will gain a little bit more insight as to the direction that the department is going. So, Mr. Lee?
So, initially, with the closure being scheduled to approximately April 7, some of the guidance coming out was really about enrichment activities for students and families, not teaching new material, but reinforcing some concepts that had already been taught, and certainly not assessing or grading any of the work that's coming in. And that's work that we have presented to families and students through the website that Dr. Hackett showed you previously. It really is the website, a culmination of the efforts of the academic directors, who have done a tremendous job marshaling together resources to get up on the site, and to Rebecca and Andrew Maron, who actually made it happen in terms of a front-facing website that is accessible to parents, that I think is relatively user-friendly. That work is scheduled to continue at this point, even though with the guidance coming out today and the conference call tomorrow, there is consideration about what will happen in the next phase, but we're not at that phase yet. One of the things that we're currently working on is how to ensure that all of the students and families are getting the resources that they need to continue learning at home. We have a good number of families that either don't have devices in their homes, don't have internet service in their homes, or have some other needs that need to be met in order for them to be successful. So, we are in the process currently of producing paper packets of materials and getting those out to families. We are also looking next week sometime to do a device distribution to those families in need. We're taking a little bit longer, just so we capture all the families and students that are involved, so that we can do it in one fell swoop, to limit some of the contact that might be necessary to deliver those devices. And Technology Department is working on a solution for those families that don't have internet service. So, it is our hope that by the time decisions are made about what the next phase actually looks like, that we will have the physical resources and the infrastructure for families and students to be able to pivot with us and to move into the next phase in a successful manner.
Because this is pretty unique, I was, I would like to know, I guess, or give an opportunity for any School Committee members who might have questions about where we are, what we just reviewed, and any...
I have some questions for you. The website's awesome, given the time that it's...
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you just announce who you are, just so everyone can...
Oh, sorry. This is Carla Saros. I have three children that are in sixth, fourth, and second. The website's great for my children. Teachers have been great with keeping up with everything, given tests or whatnot. My issue was, they're doing this work, not all the time, but they're doing it and getting credit. Also, for those kids that don't have internet, have we talked with Beld to throw up hotspots over in the locations that possibly need them? We should tap into that resource if we could.
So, we've not talked specifically with Beld about that. I know that they currently are not, based on their website, and, you know, I want to answer this kind of off the cuff, because we haven't directly spoken to them about this, but they are not currently doing new installs. What we have done, which should be arriving within a day or two, is we have ordered 50 devices that are cellular-enabled, they are Android tablets with cell service that we can deactivate at any time. So, to kind of get us through, they can also be used as hotspots. So, to Mr. Lee's earlier comment, as we identify specifically those students who are in need of a device and/or Wi-Fi or internet connection, we will be utilizing those devices, depending on grade level, to distribute those. And we also are gonna be in a situation regardless, that hard copy packets will just have to be part of the overall for us.
And one of the issues with respect to trying to identify a certain area to highlight is that the people in need are throughout the district. Every single school site that you can think of have students within it and families within it that don't have access to internet. The number is not large, but it is spread out throughout the entire community.
We also are faced with the situation that we don't want to have students coming together in a room, because we initially were talking about the possibility of some shared common spaces in different locations, but because that, then we would be able to drop some kind of connection there potentially, but essentially now, with the governor's new order of staying at home, we don't want to encourage students coming together. So, it's gonna have to be really more of a one-to-one situation.
Through the chair, this is George Kacoris.
Yes, Mr. Kacoris?
So, I don't know if this question is for Andrew, or if anyone can answer it, but obviously, with the unprecedented number of people that are working from home and on the internet, do we see any challenges when we open up that learning online for the students?
And Andrew, would you be able to take that?
Okay, well, that's sort of like case in point as to why we're having these meetings.
Well, I just, if I could follow up, Mr. Chair?
Please.
And I think, I think Dr. Hackett said it, it is last comments, I think that kind of begs the question about packets. I know that it's not the ideal way, but I think that's, that's one way we can kind of ensure equity across all students, whether they have access or not.
So, agreed, Mr. Kacoris. This is Veronica Hackett again. I think that, you know, I don't think, the challenge we have right now is that we are like Town Hall on a pretty skeleton crew. You know, generally, right now, for us, if we're not trying to process payroll, it really is pretty much Assistant Superintendent Lee, myself, and Mr. Cronin, while we were happy to put together packets and lick envelopes and all the rest of it, it's just, it's a pretty small group, because...
I understand, yeah.
So, not that we're, we're going to figure it out, is the, is the answer to the question, but to the extent that we can limit hard copy packets, we really would like to take that approach first and have it be kind of the exception and not the rule.
Yeah, and, you know, I know Andrew couldn't jump in, but it's George Kacoris again. You know, maybe we talk about, you know, if there are times of the day, because again, you've got college students all online, you've got, you know, people working from home, and, you know, all the other people that are on the internet. So, maybe it's even a question of, we can recommend times of the day that makes sense.
And a lot of what, you know, teachers and directives have been talking about are lessons and units that are asynchronous in terms of when they need to be accomplished, so that, you know, a normal class schedule where everybody agrees to be working on something at 9:00 a.m. is not something we'd be looking to do. It would be assignments that could be done when there is that bandwidth available, or when families could support the students in the household, and trying to create the most successful situation for families that we can, understanding some of the infrastructure needs of the community. For instance, a lot of people already experienced, you know, Netflix and other things going down based on the load that's coming through. As we, as a school district begin to talk more about delivering some type of video presentations to students, that's additional bandwidth. So, making sure that, you know, the day is extended to the point where people can find the opportunity to accomplish the work with the support that they need, has really been at the forefront of the conversations we're having.
And I appreciate that, and again, you know, I'd like to thank the superintendent and staff. I think you've done a tremendous job, you know. Obviously, these are uncharted waters for everyone, and I think that, you know, the way the team has pulled together has been tremendous, and, you know, certainly, you know that you have our support as well, so hopefully, we can, you know, all work through this and deliver the kinds of things that we want to deliver for the rest of the year.
Thank you for your comments, and we do know and very much appreciate the support. As you know, we've had individual conversations with all of you about just the challenges that we're faced with, and, you know, and again, would just say, we're very fortunate to have great people who have been able to really just hammer out this work and turn it around so quickly. A lot of it, obviously, were resources that existed, but to package it up and to think differently about it, it's been a tremendous effort. Thank you. Mr. Chair, whoops, so bad.
Hi, this is Kelly. I have a question. What is the status of MCAS and the SATs? Do we, do we have any ideas if those will go forward if the kids go back, or what? I was just curious.
Mr. Lee?
Well, MCAS, is the potential for MCAS to be dealt with at the state level, as I'm sure you remember, MCAS is part of a federal piece of legislation. The federal government has allowed for states to not waive that obligation this year.
Okay.
There has not been a concrete answer, although they are entertaining several different options, including postponing it or waiving it completely this year. We're awaiting a final answer.
Okay, thank you.
In terms of SATs, College Board, which also runs AP exams, you know, at this point, they're gonna do AP exams online in abbreviated 45-minute testing blocks, with some options for students, and we've communicated with families about what those options are and how our teachers are still prepared to get them ready to take those tests. The SATs, I don't have a concrete answer on that right now. Obviously, the most recent sittings have been canceled, and we'll await a final word on that.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
No, I don't have a question.
Just while we're here, do any other School Committee member have a questions, comments?
Yes, I do. Hi, it's Jen Dolan. I actually have one statement and one question. I just wanted to echo what others have said about how amazing administration and teachers have been during this period. I know it's going on at all schools and at all levels, but my son goes to Flaherty, and specifically, the amount of communication and touchpoints that have come out of that school from the teachers and the principal have been absolutely amazing. You guys probably heard, the principal and the teachers did a car parade through all the Flaherty neighborhoods, where they were beeping and waving, and they went along the bus routes just to say hello to all their students, and it was pretty amazing. I think it was a great example of what a fabulous community that we're part of and how lucky we are, which we knew before how lucky we were for to have the teachers that we have, but I think it's truly been cemented and exemplified during this crazy time. My question would be, and I fully realize it might be too premature to answer something like this, but to the equity points that others have made, my, I wonder if assignments are given, would they be necessarily on a day-by-day basis, meaning, you know, something is assigned in the morning and it's due that evening or the next day? Because it gets to sort of the parent support point that I think George made, where, you know, not, some parents are working, some parents aren't able to, you know, help their children with the assignments, no matter how old they are. So, I think getting the technology into hands is only half of the equation, as we know. The other half is, you know, providing that support that we're so accustomed to our teachers providing, and kind of having that expectation of parents that I'm not sure can be completely fulfilled in all cases. I think we've seen on social media, there are some that are ready to take over teaching full-time, and that's fine, but I think that's the exception more than the rule. So, you know, again, I'm not sure if that would be a district decision anyways, but I wanted to sort of raise the question of the timeliness of the assignments and if they would still be graded, or is it more, you know, like a you-get-a-checkmark type of thing for doing it?
Mr. Lee, do you want to speak to current discussions around those questions?
Certainly. Everything you just mentioned, Ms. Dolan, is exactly what we've been talking about. It really is about focusing on not only the safety and the well-being of all the students and the families in the town, but regardless of what we roll out in a second phase, does everybody have access to it? Can everybody be successful in accomplishing it? You know, we have special education students that require certain supports. We have English language learners who need some additional assistance. We have, as you described, families that are more than ready and willing to help support student learning, and others that might have a little bit more anxiety in that area. So, those are all the things that we're discussing as we think about what the next steps will look like. We've talked in terms of feedback as opposed to grades, and are having conversations about how we report out progress to families in a meaningful way that, again, allows for an equitable experience for all the students involved. You know, some of the challenging conversations we're having are at the high school level, where we have students who are preparing to graduate, and they have to achieve a certain number of credits in order to be in that position, and those are things we're discussing. So, you know, with all of those things as considerations and working within a very tight window, we are plowing through these conversations, trying to get to a place where we can present something to not only the School Committee, but to the community, that makes a whole lot of sense, puts kids in an advantageous position, and still ensures the safety and health of everyone.
Thank you.
Just while I've got the mic here, are there any other questions or comments from School Committee members? Okay, I'm just gonna jump us back to the agenda, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So, we are from the School Committee. We've got Policy Education Subcommittee update. Ms. Dolan?
We actually have no updates for this evening.
Okay, thank you. I know that you can work on things, and we appreciate your effort. B, Finance and Operations Subcommittee. Kacoris? Kukoris?
Thank you, Mr. Devon. So, you know, just to preface some of these comments that we're going to give you on the Finance and Operations update, obviously, we, you know, where we were a couple of weeks ago, where we are today, isn't a lot more of an uncertain state as far as budget timelines and, you know, frankly, budgets in general. So, as you probably heard, you know, all levels of government are trying to deal with that, and I'm sure at the local level, the mayor is looking at the situation, and, you know, we should hopefully start to understand some of the new timelines as things move forward. So, you know, we will continue to work on the budget. We're looking at the budget numbers again, and we'll continue to work through. We're actually looking at the overall departments and as we do each year, and we're, you know, we're going to take a little extra time over the next couple of weeks to dig into those areas and, you know, help us further develop a plan so that we're ready when we're back on a more stable budget timeline. And then, one of the things we talked about this evening that I think is important to start to, at least, start to put together some plans as we move forward. We're going to continue forward with our plan to move fifth grade to the East Middle School as we, you know, the plan that we developed over the last couple of years. And obviously, we'll see how things move forward with the special election and how things move forward with, you know, what's going on around us as well. But we just felt that it was, it was necessary to talk about bringing that forward to the full committee so that we can keep on some kind of a timeline as far as what we'll do in the next school year. So, we'd like you to think about that, and if you have any questions, we can certainly talk about that tonight, and we'll probably come back at the next meeting and look for a vote on moving forward with that plan. We're going to continue to meet weekly, I think, at this point, just because we're going to try to go through those budget and department numbers, and we'll give you updates as we move forward and we get closer to bringing the final budget numbers to the school committee.
Thank you, Mr. Kukoris. Greatly appreciated.
Mr. Chair, if I could?
By all means.
Just to, just to come back in behind what Mr. Kukoris just presented, this is Frank Hackett, I just to add a little bit more color to the bullet point number three about moving the fifth grade to the East Middle School. The discussion that we've had both internally and we had earlier tonight at Finance and Operations was pretty in-depth around the rationale as to why we think this, administratively think this is the right thing to do, why we brought it to the Finance and Operations Subcommittee, primarily when the ballot vote, the debt exclusion vote was scheduled for March 28th, which would have been this Saturday. When that was the date, it was early enough within the budget development in the fiscal year for us to react to and respond to in multiple, potentially multiple different ways, the possibility of the vote not being successful. With now on the change in the date, given the circumstances that we're all faced with in trying to make sure that, you know, we have an open and fair election that people can participate in through the mayor's office and the decision to move it to sometime later, potentially in June, there really, it really kind of removes the need or the importance of options if it weren't to not pass, but because it's so late in the year, we just would not be able to pivot to a different plan. So, the thinking is that we would be able to, we would move forward as we, as a group project for the OSBA of fifth grade moving to East Middle School next year, Ross, Hollis, Flaherty, and Morrison, as we had planned. South would stay six through eight, with fifth graders remaining at Liberty and Highlands, as was the plan prior to. And if the vote were, is successful in June or whenever it does happen, then we continue forward. If it were not successful, it buys us a year next year to reconsider or consider further the options that we've presented to this point and other options that might become available as we think it through. But, you know, the important point is that the fifth through eighth graders who would be at East Middle School next year, regardless of whether we, for example, chose to go with the six through eight East Middle School plan, where all district-wide students would be there, six through eight, if the South vote were to not be successful, the students who are, who would be there next year will just remain. So, the fifth graders roll into sixth grade in the, in the 21, 22 school year, and then it becomes, if we were to move toward a six-through eight middle school, then it's a matter of bringing all six through eighth graders to East Middle School in that future year. So, it buys us time. You know, it also allows us to commit to the, a tremendous amount of planning and work that's been done by you all, as well as administrators, directors around curriculum, instruction. Teachers know currently who are, who would be going to East Middle School, and I think it's an important step to provide some stability for both our staff, who I'm sure, we know everyone's dealing with this current issue, as well as parents and teachers, parents and students who now can at least have potentially one decision in their life made that they're not up in the air on. So, those are kind of some of the key points that were behind the recommendation and the discussion. And as Mr. Kukoris said, we really wanted to present this to you tonight as kind of a first reading and to bring it to you at your next meeting for consideration of just approval, so that we can let everyone know what we're doing and moving forward. If there are any initial questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but again, this is just a, this is just a kind of a first draft presentation of, conceptually, what we're talking about.
Comments or questions on that?
Go ahead, Kelly.
Please.
Say it again.
All right. Do we have any comments or questions on where we are with the Finance and Operations Subcommittee? Hearing none? We'll go back to our agenda.
Okay. Well, public comments. So, let me just speak to, this is obviously new for all of us. We're doing the best we can to make this work. This, this presentation, this broadcast will actually be posted on our website tomorrow. We will make an effort to broadcast, email it out to all parents so that people do know it's available, in case they weren't aware that this was happening. So, you know, we're going to continue to improve on it. Guard to public comment, what I would just encourage people to do is, if you do have comments or questions that you would like to submit, that you go to our website and use our central office email address, which, maybe me, of course, at the moment, but we can include that when we do the broadcast email out of the availability of this recorded meeting on our website. And we will, again, continue to iron out the kinks and make this better every time, every time we do it. We really appreciate people's patience on this as we've tried to make this happen in a way that's, you know, usable and accessible for everybody.
Any comments or questions from school committee members?
One, one quick question, Mr. Chair.
By all means.
Were the student, were the student representatives invited?
They were not for this evening, and we will, at the next session, have them present as well.
Just to include, just to acknowledge the fact, most of them are in the attendees, paying attention to what's being done, and I applaud them for that.
Oh, excellent.
Excellent.
Hey, everybody. Anyone, anyone else have any comments, questions? Anything they reasonably would like to speak up in an open meeting? Okay. Hearing nothing, none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Roll call. Ms. Dolan?
Aye.
Ms. LaMia?
Aye.
Mr. Chafe?
Aye.
Ms. Kukoris?
Aye.
Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
He's not able to access audio.
And the chair votes aye. We are closed. Thank you very much. Look forward to our next meeting.
So, we would like to suggest our next meeting be next Thursday, which is April 2nd.
Yes.
If, we would go again at 6:30 like we did this evening, preceded by a Finance and Operations Subcommittee meeting at 5:30. So, as of right now, that is, that's the plan. If that isn't going to work for everybody, you, we can talk offline, but we'd like to suggest next Thursday, April 2nd, at 6:30 for school committee.
I hope everyone is okay with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. I really realize a lot of you are, shall we say, making your schedules open and flexible for us. I can't help but thank you enough. You've all shouldered the burden on this and given the people a breakthrough, should we say? Your great encouragement. I've heard from more than a few people that, in spite of the fact we're dealing with something that's unprecedented, that we are, still do what we can to keep the wheels moving. So, to each and every one of you, thank you very much.
Have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.